Okay, I'll call the meeting of the September 24th Planning Commission to order. If everyone would join us for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Okay. All right, and our first item is action on the minutes.
Do one at a time?
One at a time, okay, and I'm being informed with to do one at a time. Doesn't... Did we lose Bob up there?
Oh.
And John, did we lose John? No, there he is.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay.
I don't know what they're doing with the screen over there, but... Does anybody have anything on the minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
I know, I noticed our colleague Eagle just entered the room, so we can all vote. I move that we, that we move the minutes from August 13, 2020, Planning Commission.
Okay.
Move to accept.
One second. All right, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the minutes for the October 27th?
August.
August 27th meeting? Does anybody have anything they wish to change or add, or?
No changes, Mr. Chair, and I, I move that we accept the August 27, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes as presented.
Okay.
You have a second?
Go ahead. One second.
Thank you. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And... Next item on the agenda would be citizens' input. If anybody, any person wishing to speak for three minutes about any subject of concern provides is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing, total time allotted for citizens' input shall be 15 minutes. Speakers are requested to complete a simple form, give their name and address, and subject available at the Community Development Department. Uh, agendas, uh, oh, anyway. Do we have somebody wishing to speak? Please.
I have dialogue outs for individuals to raise their hand. Um, it doesn't look like we have any hands raised, but I can offer unmute the room and see if there's any interest.
Jake, we do have someone in chambers that is at the podium.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, if you speak, uh, state your first and last name for the record, and then you'll have to fill out one of those papers, right? Or no? Okay, never mind. Just speak, state your name and...
My name is Paul Fisher. Uh, I'm a resident of District 2, I think.
District 5.
District 5. We have a, a problem with, uh, code enforcement across the street from us, across from our property. The property has been red-tagged four or five times, and rather than holding the property owner accountable to those violations, they just recently, I believe last Tuesday, decided to sign off on all of their permits and just get them going. Uh, I believe that signing was done by Scott DeLeon. My big problem with this is this property owner is a gang member, and they're setting up a gang drug operation across the street from us. They've kind of gotten into our neighborhood, and the one tool we had as citizens to try to fight back, code enforcement, just kind of got ripped away from us because somebody wanted it pushed off their desk. Somebody didn't want to deal with it, and so they signed off on it instead of holding this citizen to account, if they should. So that's my complaint today, is that, you know, I've essentially, my property value is now damaged. This person is, is gonna, has all their permits, they're gonna continue doing what they do, and there doesn't seem to be anybody stopping them. You know, the only, the only reason I could see for justifying this is if they're under a sheriff's investigation already, in which case they pushed it off of the Planning Commission's desk. If that's the case, great, but if that's not the case, then I want to know what somebody's gonna do. I want to know what Scott DeLeon's gonna do. Because all my neighbors feel the same, feel the same. Most of them are just too afraid to come forward because we're dealing with a gang, and we're all a little afraid of retaliation. You know, is this, does the county want us to deal with this situation ourselves? That probably wouldn't be a good answer. So I just want to know what the county's gonna do.
Good. Thank you, Paul.
What's the thing that you need me to fill out, here?
No, it's, no, that's, it's fine. We have your name for the record. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Jake, you said you didn't see any on...
Uh, correct. We don't have any hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. All right, we're past 9:05, so we can go on to our first item on the agenda. So bring up the public hearing. Uh-huh.
Thank you, Sam.
Shall we wait a second for you to do that, Sam? Okay, we're disinfecting the podium here in chambers, so, um, just bear with us a few minutes. Is this the first time you've had to do that, Sam? No? I'm just asking.
You mean today?
Well, obviously, today.
No, it's not, it, no, I, it's not the first time, nor will it be the last.
I didn't know you were the janitor as well.
Right. That's custodial maintenance to use.
I'm sorry. You're correct. Okay, we are properly disinfected here, so we'll bring up the item. It's a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit, UP 19-50, and categorical exemption, CE 19-96. The applicant is Richard Sarehi, proposing the retail sales of cannabis. The location is 8466 Lake Street, Lower Lake, further described as APN 012-054-025, and I believe this is an item that was put off from an earlier date for another route, for, anyway. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, all the community members in the Lake County. Uh, my name is Victoria Kim, Assistant Planner. Today, I'm gonna present a major use permit, um, to allow retail sales of tested and approved cannabis products. So I have the PowerPoint presentation as attachment number seven, so if you have the attachment number seven for your information, uh, it would be beneficial for your understanding as I present, uh, the project. If you have a PowerPoint presentation, please flip to the page number three. Um, the proposed use will be operated within the existing 2,310 square feet building, and pursuant to Article 18 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, the applicant is requesting approval of a major use permit to allow retail sales of, um, approved and tested cannabis project, a product. And currently, uh, the address is 8466 Lake Street in Lower Lake, and, uh, zone as a C1, local commercial. Um, if you flip to the page, uh, next page five, you'll find the general plan map and zoning map. As I said, the zoning is a C1, and general plan is, uh, assigned the parcel as local commercial. And last time, this is the second, a public hearing, and the first, um, public hearing for the project was, um, held on June 25th, 2020, and there was a couple of concerns addressed by commissioners, and I'm gonna go over briefly about the concerns. The first concern was traffic safety around the project site due to the potential increase in traffic volume, and planning staff's responses is the project is not anticipating to generate significant traffic congestion, nor result in any changes to the roadway. Um, the Community Development Department coordinated with the Lake County Public Works Department regarding about the commissioners' concerns. And on August 19, uh, 2020, the CDD received comments from the Department of Public Works indicating a traffic study would not be necessary due to a low probability of adding more than 100 traffic, uh, trip per hour. Just for your information, the applicant, um, anticipated maximum 75 traffic, uh, customer traffic trip per day. Secondly, students' safety was addressed, students' safety while walking within the project vicinity. The applicants have expressed a willingness to increase security guards and send a guard out to the driveway entrance on Lake Street during the afternoon pedestrian commute. Also, according to Article 41, Section 41.9, the Lake County zoning ordinance, um, says a minimum of five-foot-wide planted area or six-foot-high wooden fence is required when adjacent to any residential district side yard. So the project includes both 10-foot-wide planted area along the front yard and this six-foot-high wooden fence along the side and rear yards. Lastly, close approximately to adjacent schools, including, but not limiting to, Car High School, Lower Lake Elementary, Lower Lake High School, et cetera. The nearest school, which is Car High School, is approximately 2,000 feet southeast from the site. The proposed use meets all the development standards, including proximity to the school. If you flip the PowerPoint presentation page number six, the flood zone indicates SX, meaning the area of moderate or minimum hazard from the principal source of flood in the area. The next page shows a site, proposed site plan and landscape plan, and somehow didn't come up with a high resolution, so I add a higher resolution, resolution map on the next two pages. You will find the better quality for proposed site plan and landscape plan. And next couple of, three, four pages are existing condition of parcel and building for your, um, understanding of the, about the project. And on page 12 and 13 is, um, proposed signage for the cannabis dispensary. So if you flip over to page 15, um, I'm gonna go over the project analysis. The proposed retail sales of commercial cannabis products would create a diverse, diversity within the local economy and create future employment opportunities for local residents. Um, according to the applicant's application, there wouldn't be a minimum of six employee at peak shift. Additionally, the proposed use anticipating, as I said, up to 95 customers per day and three to five deliveries per week. Um, to protect the public's safety and health and communities' comfort, all the visitor will go through a check-in process at the storefront prior to entering the store. Also, the project areas, including parking lot, will be under the supervision of a trained security personnel during operating hours and surveillance cameras at all hours. Um, the subject site is within the Lower Lake Area Plan's boundary, and the project includes a cannabis retail business within the existing building and is required to comply with the regulations and development standards within the zoning code, as well as other local and state requirements pertaining to health and safety and ensuring land use, um, compatibility. According to Article 18, again, C1 Local Commercial District is intended to provide for small localized retail and service businesses district, which provide goods and services to surrounding residential development. The retail sales of cannabis is permitted in the C1 Local Commercial District upon issuance of major or minor use permit to Article 18, Section 18.5. The project meets all development standards for cannabis retail sales within the C1 district with incorporated conditions of approval. Those conditions, um, you can find attachment number six, and attachment number five, um, shows major use permit findings. I'm gonna briefly go over what the, what those are findings are. Um, the proposed use of retail sales of cannabis is permitted in the C1, and, um, to protect the public's safety and health and communities' comfort, all the visitors will go through a check-in process, and the project site is approximately 1.61 acres in size and located in the periphery of the commercial corridor. Um, the project parcel is located in the closed, uh, existing infrastructure and opportunity for employment and services and recreation opportunities. Uh, the project would not expect to generate significant traffic congestion, nor increase any hardship to pedestrians. According to the comments from, uh, the public, County Public Works Department received August 19, 2020, the traffic study would not be necessary due to a low probability to add more than 100 traffic trip per hour, and then applicant is anticipating maximum 75, uh, traffic per day. Since the retail sales of cannabis is named as a permitted use in C1 zoning district within the local commercial ordinance, the proposal is consistent with the government ordinance in Lake County. And if you flip the PowerPoint presentation slide to page 16, um, the applicant is proposed a commercial cannabis retail business within the existing structure, approximately 2,310 square feet in size, and does not propose expansion of a footprint. Uh, the project site is served by existing utilities within the commercial and residential developed area. The project site is previously distributed, um, and no environmentally sensitive resources existing on site. The project will not result in the damage, uh, to scenic resources, is not listed as a hazardous waste site, and does not contain historical resources. Um, in addition, the project is consistent with the Lake County General Plan, Lower Lake Area Plan, and Lake County zoning ordinance with incorporated conditions of approval. Thus, planning staff has determined that the proposed use is categorically exempt from CE 4 guidelines pursuant to exemption class one, section 15301, and you can find those definition of a class one on the PowerPoint presentation pages 16. So if you flip the page 18, um, it's a summary of major use permit findings for your information. So, um, staff recommends that the Planning Commission detect the following action, which is adopt categorical exemption, CE 19-96, and approve major use permit, UP 19-50. Thank you. That's all my presentation, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Do any of you have any questions? Planning Commissioners?
No. I don't have any questions.
I, I have some input, uh...
Trying to figure out... Now or after, after public input?
Pardon me?
You want to do that now or after public input?
Well, it, it kind of bothers me that we asked for a traffic study, and we're told that it doesn't come up to standards for a traffic study, uh, because the applicant says they're only gonna have 75. I can just say off the top of my head, they're gonna have 300. Uh, you know, I, how do we determine, the, the business is not open, they don't know what their actual, uh, use is gonna end up being, and how, how many customers are gonna have every day, and how that's going to affect. I, I, I don't see that, you know, we've made a change in what we talked about at the last meeting, so, um...
I kind of agree with you, Bob.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at right now.
I still also feel that, I mean, there's an empty space up, you know, other space that's available in, in the area that would be better suited for this type of location, I feel too, but... John, did you have something you wanted to say? You looked like you were about to.
I, I do have a question for, um, for planning staff. I too was confused by the attachment and the back and forth with, um, the, the gentleman who, you know, seemed to be new to the county and couldn't really respond very specifically, but I do not understand a reference to 100 trips per hour. That can't possibly be the standard. I mean, that would be like a freeway. There would, there would have to be so many cars going in and out per hour. So the, I'm troubled by the difference between 100 trips per hour and 75 trips per day. Uh, I, I, or am I misunderstanding the notion of trips? Or if I am, how does it apply to this application?
Can I respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, so to help your understanding, uh, I did some research about the local streets, and the project is located off of the Bryant Road and Lake Street, which is a major collector road serving to low to moderate capacity, so generally, those roads are not sort of, uh, paved, I mean, provided for the major high volume of traffic, first of all, and, according to the public, uh, our county public engineer, he's saying that 100 trip per hour, which means like, if, if you consider about the, from seven to seven, like, multiplied by like, at least like 12, it's gonna be, uh, 1,200 traffic trips versus, um, that's the worst-case scenario, saying that 300 traffic per day, so it's still relatively low, so my, uh, the planning staff's, um, consideration was compared to 1,200 traffic volume versus 300 traffic volume is still relatively low, and existing road is just for low to moderate capacity, so we're expecting not more than extreme, um, high volume of traffic.
Well, I think part of, for me, what I was looking at, I mean, what is the current traffic like on that road? I mean, what is the current traffic rate that goes by there in any given hour, especially during the hours when there are students on the road? And then, I mean, was that what you were looking at too, Bob?
The, the problem is, right now, is that the traffic is really light, because there is no school.
Well, like, correct.
The kids aren't going back and forth. On a school day, when there's parents delivering their kids to each of those schools, and people driving back and forth, students, uh, driving back and forth, most of which are late and in a hurry and not paying attention, and, uh, you know, probably exceeding this, this posted speed limit. I believe the posted speed limit is 30 or 35, and then it drops down to 25 as you get to, uh, Lower Lake Elementary, and, and I argue that, uh, Car Lake, uh, High School is further away than Lower Lake Elementary, but that, that really doesn't matter. It, uh, the elementary school, they've got everything choked down there at, uh, the entrance to the elementary school, where you basically have to almost come to a stop to get through there in the mornings and in the afternoons when their parents are picking their kids up, because, uh, it, it gets quite heavy, uh, during those, you know, two times of the day. Uh, the other thing is that there's a very large, uh, housing unit built at the end of, uh, Dam Road and, uh, Lake Street, and where the, uh, where they intersect, and there's a lot of kids that, uh, walk back and forth through there every morning and every afternoon. So that's what my study would be to measure is on a normal day when the schools have, you know, are in session and have, are up to population, you know, just, just how busy is that street? That street is very busy for two hours a day, first thing and last thing in the afternoon. So, um, in, in fact, I would, I would say from 7:30 till 9:00 in the morning, and from 1:00 on through 3:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon, those streets are very busy, and like I say, you, you've got high school kids getting out of school, most of which have cars that, you know, that they're, uh, in a hurry to be somewhere else, and, uh, they're not paying attention, and you, you're just adding more, uh, situation where, where people are gonna be stopping in the middle of the street to turn left or right into this establishment, and, you know, first off, it, it's a 20-foot-wide driveway, so that means they gotta slow down pretty well to get in and out of there if there happens to be somebody else in the, in the driveway when they're going in or out. So, um, you know, the, the traffic study means everything to me, and to sit there and say that it, it, we don't have, you know, 1,200 cars per day driving past there, uh, that, that may well be good and true, but the reality is that we have a lot of people on foot, a lot of traffic during two specific times of the day, and I, you know, I, this is what I brought up at the last meeting, and I'm going to stick with it, because, uh, I, I see nothing but problems ahead for, you know, the location of this store.
So if you, uh, think, if the other business uses such as pharmacy or retail store, um, would be proposed, it would be beneficial than, um, retail sales of a cannabis?
I think what Bob is asking is for that specific, and I, I, I tend to agree with him that with, any kind of business really that is gonna go in there, the county needs to look at, at what, you know, what, what is, what is currently going on on that road, you know, like Bob, who lives in the area, has probably seen it firsthand, so he's speaking from experience, but, you know, I'm sure the road is at a certain classification, but maybe the traffic on that road is above what its current classification is. Does the county know that? Do they have the data to show that? And is that kind of what you're thinking, Bob, and, I mean, regardless of what, what, uh, kind of business goes in here, or?
Yeah, there, there was never intended to be a business, and unfortunately, looking at the map, it's the definition of a spot zone. They put this piece of commercial property right in the middle of everything else that's not commercial. Um, you know, so it's, it's not zoned properly, it's not zoned, uh, to be a retail outlet. It's zoned, it was zoned originally to be, uh, even though it says commercial, it was zoned to be a fraternal organization's meeting hall. They met once a month, and they had dinners or they had whatever. It was after hours, it was, uh, you know, it was, uh, a situation where, uh, it was not intended to have traffic in and out of it every day, uh, seven days a week, and, uh, you know, it's just, uh, a poor place to have a piece of commercial property, you know?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'd venture that I'm the most sympathetic commissioner towards this application, just based on the, the way you measure things. On the other hand, I remember well at our last meeting, Commissioner Malley's concern about traffic. On the other hand, I remember well at our last meeting Commissioner Malley's concern about traffic. I believe Commissioner Brown spoke to that point as well. And I appreciate the work that Victoria Kim put into this, but I don't think the revised staff report really speaks to the concern raised by Commissioner Malley and echoed by Commissioner Brown and others. And it's, in fact, I read that section of the attachments very carefully and I I found the traffic discussion inconclusive and confusing. And it doesn't speak to the type of specificity in terms of times of day that I think is Commissioner Malley's point and a point that I think does deserve better exploration. But I am eager to hear from the applicant, who I assume is here today and public input as well. I know that the report talks about a security guard, could it be available at certain times of day? I'm not sure what role that person could play, but those are my comments before we hear from the applicant, et cetera.
Okay, I would also like to, if you guys look at attachment three, page two on here, the applicant is marked that this will, it says generate potential, generate substantial additional traffic. So, you know, and I know that's one thing we're discussing here, you know, what is substantial? What are they considering substantial? What does the county consider substantial? I guess what do we as a body, as a governing body, just feel is substantial as well? So and I don't know if that, you know, seventy-five trips a day, if that is what the applicant was thinking is substantial in when they filled this out or what? So do you guys have anything else before we perhaps listen in from the applicant or?
Commissioners, this is Scott Gillian, Public Works Director and Community Development Director. Before you jump to public input, perhaps I can clarify some points here from the Public Works Department and Commissioner Malley, I certainly don't want to have this appear that we were not mindful of your request. You know, we looked at this, my staff engineer looked at this. He is a licensed traffic engineer with the state. There are a number of things that go into the requirement for a traffic study. You know, yes, the applicant indicated what he presumed is gonna be his traffic impact here. But there are some, you know, some documents that we use. We looked at the size of the building, we looked at the type of business that would go there, retail sales. And, you know, there are some industry standard numbers for generation of, you know, trips per day and trips per hour in a, you know, a maximum trip per hour capacity. And in both of those cases, it's my understanding that the numbers, again, based on the the type of business and the size of the establishment, those numbers didn't reach a point that would be the threshold for triggering such a permit. And so what we run into is a conflict with do the numbers support requiring a permit versus do, you know, the desire to just ask somebody to do one? And again, no disrespect to you or your request, but we struggled with the, you know, the conflict there. I cannot speak to the zoning and you raise a point. You certainly have the history of the property, a greater understanding of the history than most. And unfortunately, I cannot speak to the spot zoning that you refer to. So that'll need to be something that your commission deliberates. And unfortunately, I can't really speak to it. I hope that that at least sheds some light on the decision for not requiring the traffic impact study. Again, I will apologize to you, I don't want you to think that we just were not mindful of your request.
I wasn't trying to indicate that at all, Scott, and I understand. I'm just saying that after I took, you know, the position and stated, you know, what my concerns were, unfortunately, this is not a normal period of time. You know, we don't have, we can't just sit out there tomorrow morning and say, well, this is normal because we're not in the normal, you know.
And you just brought the next point that I was gonna make and that is even if we did the traffic study, I'm not sure it's gonna be reflective of the concerns that you raised with
Yeah, it's most definitely not.
The students coming to the classroom and all of that, so. Yeah, it's, we're in a dilemma here and I, you know, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. No one else has anything? We'll go ahead and open up the public comment. If the applicant is here, we'll go ahead and let them speak if they wish. Jake?
Yeah, so do we have a name for the applicant? I do have a hand raised from Scott Candle.
Uh, let's see.
But if we want the applicant
The applicant would be Richard Seregi, I'm sorry, I might be butchering that. There, probably Rick S.
I think I see him here, yeah. I'm gonna send a unique request to Rick S. Looks like you're unmuted there, will you please give us a sound check and confirm your first and last name?
Uh, Rick Seregi.
We hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, sorry. Scott Candle is our attorney, just so you know, so he does represent us. And if it's okay, I'd like Scott to speak first and then I'll speak after Scott.
Um, that's okay with me.
Sure. Oh, no, I'll, okay, if it's okay, either way, whatever you guys want.
That's fine.
Okay, go ahead, Jake, let's go ahead and hear from Scott Candle.
Okay, I sent a unique request to Scott Candle. Scott, looks like you're unmuted, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Oh, yeah, Scott Candle.
All right, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. First, Ms. Kim, thank you for the detailed report and analysis, appreciate that. I understand the concerns, let me first introduce myself, I'm an attorney, I'm a cannabis attorney, I'm also actually on the city council, a law expert here. And I understand everybody's concerns. I'm a little confused about the purpose of this hearing. It sounds like the concerns that we're getting is that this particular property should not have been zoned commercial. And that was a mistake, it's a spot zoning, it's not applicable for this particular area because a commercial business is gonna add traffic. And that may or may not be true, I'm just not sure that is supposed to be the issue right now. I think that's probably when you are doing the city planning and the city council does the master plan and they do the zoning, that's when that should be addressed. It seems like the question right now is, given the current zoning that the city has already agreed to, is this an appropriate business to be in that zoning? And when it comes to the traffic study, what I'm taking from this is that there are different businesses that have industrial standards of how much traffic they generate. So if we were gonna put a McDonald's drive-through in there and we said, you know, how much traffic, well, normally a drive-through is gonna be, you know, two people a minute. You know, so we've got a hundred and twenty people an hour, that's gonna have a significant impact on congestion and therefore we should have a traffic study, you know, to see, given the circumstances, that would be an appropriate business. It seems like this particular business in this industry, there's a standard of, they're expecting much lower traffic than that. You know, and they've said seventy-five a day, I think that's in the range of the industry standard. The applicants also have other dispensaries that they can speak to as far as what they see on a daily basis, they have their boots on the ground with this, so they know what to expect. And the question is, given those numbers, you know, whether it's seventy-five, even if they underestimate it, it's double that, it's a hundred and fifty a day. You're nowhere near a hundred an hour. And because traffic studies are expensive and they take time, we in general have a threshold and we say, okay, this is the threshold regardless of the business, you know, having nothing to do with cannabis or anything else. And we're just interested in traffic. What is the standard and we're gonna try to be consistent? And everything above that, we're gonna have a traffic study, everything below that, we're not gonna have a traffic study. And since the expectation of this business is so far below that standard, the, it sounds like the staff decided a traffic study wasn't necessary and wouldn't be appropriate in this, in this situation, because the number of trips generated were so far lower than that standard that we use for every other business. Now, I mean, we get to another question, which is okay, but maybe this is, given that this might be the wrong zoning, it shouldn't have been commercial in the first place, it is, how do we deal with it? I think the applicant has expressed that they're happy to be as flexible as possible because they want this to be safe. You know, the last thing that they want is there to be a traffic accident or a kid to get hit by a car or something like that. So I'm sure they are willing to work with the planning commission to say, okay, would you like us to have a traffic guard? You know, a crossing guard, you know, that would be there during certain hours. You know, we can say, okay, these are when we expect, you know, there to be walking traffic for schools or there's gonna be, you know, vehicle traffic and we wanna have somebody out there that's gonna make sure that they stay safe. I'm sure that they would comply with whatever requirements that you feel would be appropriate. But to deny them the ability to have a business there based on traffic, I don't think that would be appropriate in this case. So that's, those are my thoughts, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and I'm sure the applicant can address more specifically what they can do in order to address your concerns as well as, you know, if you had specifics about traffic that they have in other dispensaries that they have run, I'm sure they're happy to discuss those with you and tell you how they've handled any other, you know, situations that came up that were similar. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, John.
Bob, you know that that area much better than I do. Is the point that children, schoolchildren would be walking along the road or crossing the road at some point? I'm trying to understand the relevance of a security guard being out there or a crossing guard.
Yeah, I don't think there's a need for a security guard to be out there, he would be nothing more than a witness to an accident, so I don't think they cross anywhere along there. They come out of the, there's a housing tract right behind where this establishment is located and they come out Tish Tang Road and hit Lake Street and walk along the eastern edge of Lake Street towards Lower Lake, so. I don't see them crossing the road unless, of course, you know, you always have the kid that's bouncing the ball and the ball runs out in front of the cars, you know, that kind of thing, but it's not a situation of of that as much in the way of crossing, you know, I don't know that I, yeah, I don't have an answer. I just, I just don't believe that adding more traffic to this position or to this spot first thing in the morning and in the afternoon is going to help alleviate anything, it's it's just gonna compound the problem, so.
Right. I think, I think it's a situation where the road already, the area around there already needs an improvement, I mean, there's no side, I drove on it yesterday, the day before. There's no sidewalks or anything there, there's not even, I don't even think there's a fog line, is there, Bob?
Well, they did put a bike lane in, but it's across the, it's across the road. And the kids, if they ride their bikes and they ride in the bike lane, then they cross usually right in front of the school, you know, they ride up the hill, past the cemetery and then turn into this, one of the schools there, so. But, yeah, I, you know, I don't know what the answer is. I just, I just know that we're adding more fuel to the fire by putting more cars on the roadways when those areas are saturated first thing in the morning like they are.
Okay. Rick, did Rick wanna say anything? I see he's been muted again.
Yeah, it's Rick Seregi again, testing?
Yes, we hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kim, thank you and the staff for the job that you did. I agree with a lot of what Scott had to say. I just, I just, I hear a lot of opinions and I don't see a lot of facts. I mean, like adding fuel to the fire, I don't know, I don't understand where the fire is. The owner of the property that has been running a business there for several years says that there's no traffic problem and he's owned the business for years. There was a traffic study that we submitted, even though there wasn't one requested, it wasn't a current one, but Walmart's expansion did do a traffic study, which didn't address our exact location, but even a Walmart wasn't going to affect the traffic the way that they're talking, you know, hundreds of cars per hour. I have owned a home and have a fifteen-year-old son in the county of Lake since two thousand and eight. I mimic Scott Candle, the last thing we want is a problem. In our letter that we wrote on September fourth, we did state some actual facts from dispensaries in larger markets and actual dispensaries, the numbers mimic numbers from an actual dispensary in Lake County, in the county of Lake, in Clear Lake. Seventy-five visits per day is very overstated to the fact of sometimes you got three people in the car, a husband and a wife and a mother-in-law that might be shopping. So that seventy-five could be one car, three people in one car, it might be fifty. We did overestimate how many people were going to be coming. The people that own the property, I think they're going to speak up to say, you know, the commissioners are saying that, you know, I live here and I see this and there's a lot of traffic. One of the other things is we're not gonna be opened and what you're mostly concerned about is the morning traffic. We're not gonna be opened until it's done. And the afternoon traffic is gonna be much slower from, that's what I heard coming out of some of the people today. The traffic guard and the security cameras is gonna make people be more careful. It's just, it's just a fact. We don't tolerate, and the person being out there, if somebody, if one of our customers comes in, they could be expelled from ever shopping at our store again if they're gonna cause a traffic problem. I have been in this industry with, within, and Scott can attest to this, there's plenty of dispensaries around the state that the state's rule is six hundred feet from a school. And there's dispensaries that are six hundred feet from a school, some jurisdictions have allowed can even go, can change it themselves to go lower than that. Safety is our number one priority. And I just wanna make that clear, you know, the county did a great job on what they did. Like I said, that there are other commercial businesses in the area right next door to us is another commercial business, so to say there's no other commercial business, that's another opinion because I think it's some kind of plant that is a commercial business there. So the zoning, you know, we're meeting the zoning criteria, everything that the county has approved, we have met every criteria and we've tried to go beyond that. So I just wanna, I just wanna state that safety is our concern, I don't believe, you know, bouncing a ball down the street, I know that, but it's a dirt road, like you said. You know, maybe the county can look at that with the tax dollars that we're going to be contributing. There's a cigarette store, a gun store and a liquor store in closer proximity that aren't going to be paying a cannabis tax. Maybe some of our tax dollars that Maybe some of our tax dollars that we're going to be paying to the county will be able to help improve that road and we're willing to work with you guys on that. So I think there's a lot of pluses, I think I think staff did a great job and I I just don't think it's about traffic, I think it's about we we met everything that was put in front of us. And we want to work with the county, every jurisdiction that we work in, we work very closely with the government. We want to be a partner, not a, not an enemy. We we want to be your partner and we're taking that approach just like we do at any other dispensary that we manage. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if we could go ahead and Jake, possibly, I can't really see that through this plexiglass, Becky Salado?
Yes, I will, uh, I see them here, I've sent a unmute request to Becky Salado. Becky, I see that you're unmuted, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Sure, my name is Becky Salado, I'm the superintendent for Canacta Unified School District.
Perfect, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Um, I I just wanted to state today, first and first and foremost, I I very much respect um the applicant's sincerity and I truly do believe that in no way does he mean any harm to anyone. I I I completely respect that and appreciate him stating that over and over again. You know, I I appreciate their concern for having a crossing guard as well. My concern, and I'm speaking for my board of trustees and our 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 school district, obviously is about the safety and security of our 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 students. I have several schools in that area that I'm concerned about and my concern is not solely related to this applicant or um or the product that they will be selling, my concern is completely about the zoning of business there and and this being a business that would come in and increase traffic. I I in the same token, I very much appreciate appreciate Commissioner Mally's um statements. I I don't know how you would do a um traffic survey right now because it is not current, i- it's not real times. My kids are not in face-to-face instruction right now, so you would not get actual results, but I would encourage the commission to possibly, um, I I don't know what your protocol is, i- if you can um extend the time on this before you approve and do an actual study when our kids are back in. But if anyone has been on that street during the morning hours and the afternoon hours, when schools are opening and closing, I I have spent many days there in the last year, holding my breath just in the street itself. The traffic is very bad, I have a lot of student drivers, I have a lot of students walking, I have a lot of parents who um are not necessarily, you know, are they have other things on their mind, maybe timing, maybe whatever, but it is a very dangerous area just the way the street is um is laid out and I feel like any business adding there would add an additional danger to our students. And um obviously, their safety is our first and foremost concern. So uh um we in no, in no way are are trying to cause any harm to the applicant or prevent, you know, anyone from from having their business, we're just saying that that area, any type of business, we believe would be um bring in additional traffic and cause additional danger to our students. Um, I don't know what the answer is, but I would ask the the commission at least um somehow take a look further at what that road looks like when school is fully in session. Thank you, they, I appreciate your time today.
May I speak again to address the commissioner?
Uh, let's go ahead and finish through these before we um hear from you again, please.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, it looks like we have Manta Home?
Yes, uh, I've sent a unmute request to uh Manta Home here. All right, it looks like you are unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, sir, good morning, uh, my name is Peter Schiffman and my wife, Terry Larson, is with me. Uh, through our limited liability company, we are the owners of the building and a parcel of land there.
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. As I said, we we own that property now, I I've got approximately four and a half to five years. Uh, we are in and out of that building all day long, including during school hours. In my five years there, yes, we do have children walking uh past our building. We have very little uh the students going that way. At any one time, I'll see a group of two, maybe three teenagers. I've never seen a grammar school age people walking, uh, parents are usually there picking those individuals up. Some of the comments from the last meeting was the backup of traffic in front of our building and around the curve up to Dam Road, there's been absolutely no backup of traffic at all. School buses are backed up maybe two and that is actually at the crosswalk of the grammar school and occasionally at the high school. I don't see any particular additional problems with a retail business going into our location there. Uh, one of the biggest problems we have is those who are speeding, which is out of our control. Um, I think my wife would like to address that issue.
Yes, to me, the biggest issue, uh, especially in that neighborhood is the curve. And um the young lady from the school board is probably very well familiar and when she mentioned holding her breath every day, I hold my breath every day, that one of these cars coming from the school, going around that curve at forty-five miles an hour is going to hit one of the kids that are walking on the street, now fortunately, most of them are smart enough to walk on the other side of the street where the bike trail is. And so that is, has saved some lives, but in my, in my opinion, and I'm not a professional or expert, but I do have a good eye for things, uh, the way to solve that problem, both for the danger of the curve and also for the protection of the children from whatever you feel the threat of the dispensary or traffic would be is to bypass our property by putting in two crosswalks, one on the cemetery side of the curve and the other on the side of the curve uh before they get to our place. This not only takes the traffic away from our building, but it also creates a safe space where these drivers who are literally forty-five to fifty mile an hour drivers that come around that curve during the school hours and we sit there and watch it every day, will not be putting any children at danger who are walking on our side of the street because they're actually literally walking towards the curb, so by rights, they shouldn't even be ri- walking on that side of the road because it's very dangerous. So let's take some of our, the tax money from the dispensary and use that to pay for two crosswalks. They'll bypass the building and we'll have no issues.
I can add a couple of extra comments, um, number one, Bryant Street itself has very little traffic, only people who use that are the residents and that probably is somewhat busy early in the mornings, a lot of them are contractors and then coming home at night about five or six o'clock, which is outside of school hours. The other aspect is that, to the best of my knowledge, and I know for since I've owned the building, we've had absolutely no accidents at all on that area of the street. Therefore, your concern for safety, um, I understand that completely, but we've had no incidents there. So saying it's going to, it's going to cause a more of a traffic hazard, um, I'm not too sure about that.
Not seventy-five percent.
I've done studies among some of my clients, I have my own accounting practice, if you're not aware of that. And I can tell you that the first two years of activity of a new dispensary generates approximately four co- four transactions per fifteen minutes. They average approximately two people per vehicle, they keep these sta- statistics at all times to verify and to analyze their sales numbers. So we're looking at two to three, maximum four cars per fifteen minutes. And we base that on the total sales plus the average transaction for these individual dispensaries. So um I don't believe there truly is a traffic concern or hazard for this location. The last thing I would like to address is that you're all state, well, not all of you, some of you are stating that the zoning, even though it's it meets code for the moment, is not appropriate. Well, if it's not appropriate for us, then it's not appropriate for any retail business, if that's the case, then you are devaluing my investment in my property, I bought it knowing it was zone C one. If you're going to state that it's not properly zoned there, then you're causing financial hardship to a citizen of this county. So those are my really only comments for the moment and I appreciate your listening to my my concerns.
Sorry, if I could just ask uh for clarification from you, uh, real quick. You said that you look at kind of an average of four transactions per fifteen minutes? And I'm assuming you're averaging that out over, what, an eight-hour day?
The hours would be nine to nine.
Nine to nine, well, if you average that over, over an eight-hour day, you're looking at, that's, you know, a hundred and twenty-eight, which is significantly higher than your seventy-five a day.
Sir, 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 can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, that's why I was asking you for clarification.
That's fine, we're basing this on average transaction and without providing confidential information, the average transaction of the claims I have are approximately fifty dollars per customer.
Oh, no, I'm I'm not interested in in the in the value, I'm, you just mentioned.
Yeah, it's based on how we calculate the number of customers per hour. And that has a big, big impact on what you're, what you're trying to accomplish here in the traffic flow. So, you know, we've come up with an analysis of the number of cars that will go through into our facility. And these are hard facts, these not make up numbers. So we're looking at approximately four transactions per hour, which could be one car, I mean, excuse me, per fifteen minutes, that could be one car, it could be four cars. So we're looking at sixteen transactions per hour, which could be anywhere from sixteen cars down to four cars. So I think the, and these are facts, and I could sub- substantiate these facts by um redacting some of the information on these reports. Meaning who the clients are.
So, I'm sorry, could be sixteen cars per hour, was that what you said?
Transactions.
Transactions, okay, gotcha. So that could be, yeah, could be four cars an hour.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh, we said each car could carry multiple transactions, that's why we're, we're just basing an average on how many transactions they're conducting a day, based on an average of how many cars would come in with, say, two people in it, I think that's how they calculate it.
Right, yeah, I hear. Does anyone else wish to speak? Do uh the planning commissioners have any further questions for the clients? I guess even if we close public comment, can we still hear from the clients, probably, or no? Nobody's arguing with that. Okay, okay, Jake, will you just ask one more time if we have any, I don't see any more hands, but any more public comment on this? Anybody here in the chambers wish to speak on this? Doesn't appear so.
Um, so I have uh the, I have three hands up, but it's from the uh the individuals who have just spoken. Uh, Scott Candell uh re-raised his hand to comment, um, but I think you said earlier that uh they could speak after public comment closes. Um, I can unlock the room and offer a mute requests to the room to see if there's anybody who's not following direction to that wishes to speak.
Okay.
Okay, so I've sent out a unmute request, if you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
My name is Craig Billings.
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I am the resident that's right across the street from this building and I heard on last week's meeting, they were proposing to enter Bryant Road, which to me, I I do not want to see happen at all. I do not want to have the extra dust or or what have you that might be generated for traffic coming up, extra traffic coming up that road. And, you know, they were talking about also the commercial building next door, which is just a storage facility for recycling business that may have a, you know, a large truck or traffic that comes there maybe two to three times a week. But I have seen a lot of traffic during the school times during this, and, you know, that would be the major concern, you know, the added traffic. You know, for a commercial retail. You know, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, and you are resident across Bryant Street, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else, Jake, that you can find?
Uh, it doesn't look like anybody else is, I only saw that one individual unmutes.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the other commissioners, do you want, would you like to hear from the applicants one last time before we close it? And and then direct questions directly to them?
Only, only if they have something new to add.
Okay.
In addition to what they've already said.
Okay, um, if we could possibly, Rick? Real quick, if there's something you would like to add?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the gentleman that just spoke, we wanted to say we considered the dust on the street because it's not a paved road and that's why we put the entrance on Lake Street. You know, because we did consider the neighbors that are, you know, close to us. And a- addressing, you know, um, about possibly delaying this until you can get a traffic study done, even though the traffic study isn't going to change anything, I believe the com- the staff has already talked about that. But denying us an application now does not fix the problem. Wouldn't you rather fix the problem, work with us as a partner with the county that's going to be paying you tax dollars? You know, with COVID nineteen and everything, the state, the country's been devastated. I mean, we're a business that meets all your criteria, if the zoning, you know, like you said, you you know, the I I don't think the zoning's going to get changed, you might not agree with it, but that's what's in the general plan. Um, so I just want to say again, we've addressed the dust, we've addressed the parking. We could probably even put um one of those signs up that show the speed, you know, that deters people from speeding, you know, that that tracks your speed. License plate readers that we'd be willing to put in, we're willing to do anything, but just denying the application because you want to do a traffic study, which your staff has advised you probably isn't going to change anything. We're not going to be a burden with that many cars. Again, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, I actually, um, I think maybe before, no, go ahead, okay, let's, let's go ahead and hear from the the whoever it was that was in Manta Home. If they have their raised hand, their hand raised.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you for your time again, um, I'd like to address our neighbor.
If you could just, wait, 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 if you could just restate your name, please.
I'm sorry, Peter Schiffman.
Thank you.
We're the owners of the facility.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, in addressing our neighbor's comments, uh, number one, as Rick just said, we're not going to use uh Bryant Ascent Access uh into our our location. However, in regards to the recycling uh facility next to us, I know the gentleman works and he's not there during the daytime most of the time, but their trucks, being two, three times a week, don't park in their facilities, what they do is they park on my property and because there's no um it, okay, it's not relevant, but they literally park their semi uh trucks on my property on the road, which causes more dust than a vehicle going by, and this happens two to three times a week. And we have no problem with that, which we're trying to be good neighbors, I understand that the uh recycling plant has minimal to uh space for them to have the semis there, so they drop their, drop their boxes off, go in there, pick up another box. So the dust aspect is already there, we don't like the dust ourselves, people go by us and we get it get it ourselves, however, that's just a fact of life right now. Um, if somebody wanted us to go into Bryant Access, we'd be willing to pave the road. I mean, we're got, we want to be good neighbors, we want to do whatever's necessary to satisfy everyone's concerns.
Okay. Okay.
And that makes a lot more dust than customers.
I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't hear, hear what you said there.
What my wife was trying to say, sir. The original plan for us purchasing the building, besides holding my accounting office, was to do concerts, uh, live events, and we were told by the county that we were allowed to have three permits a year to do that. In addition, the Rebecca's Lodge, which previously owned the building, were also holding live events at that facility. Um, as far as I know of, no neighbors complained for that. And when we approached our neighbors regarding what our intent was, they didn't have a problem with that. So, you know, there seems to be a conflict of, of, of commentary at this point.
If we're about to dust, we can.
So.
If we decide to go in that way, right now, we're going.
Anyway, I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you. Um. If we could possibly hear from Scott Candell one more time, please.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, ju- just to be quick, let, let me start if I can. Uh, I apologize if I am misunderstanding the process. My thought was that the purpose of this hearing was not to determine the pros and cons of the current zoning. My understanding, the purpose of this hearing was pretty succinctly, we have a set of criteria. Does this business match the criteria in order to qualify for the use permit and, and the exemption? Um, and the staff report, which looked into this, uh, very clearly came back with the answer that yes, this business matches all of the legal criteria required for them to be able to have a business at this location. I, I feel like that's kind of the scope of what this hearing is supposed to be about, and I, I apologize if I misunderstand it. But it seems like we're getting a little bit of sidetracked of, should this really be a commercial zoning? Should it be a C1? Should we be doing something else? And I think that that's, and again, and, and I may be wrong, but if hypothetically, this gets denied and it gets appealed up to the city council, the issue before the city council is, did this business qualify? And were they given a, a permit? And if, if the city council says, you know what, they qualified and they weren't given a permit, then they would, they would reverse it, i- is my understanding. And again, I, I apologize if I, if I'm getting it wrong. But I'm hoping that we can focus on the issue of, this is what's required for a business to be here. Does this business meet those qualifications? And if they do, they get their permit. If they don't, they don't get their permit. Um, and, and that's all I wanted to, to focus on. Thank you for your time. And I'm available for questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Bob.
Uh, I, I just want to, uh, I, I know Mr. Candell's done some time working with a city, uh, uh, in a city situation, but this is the county of Lake, not the city of Clearlake. You're outside of the city of Clearlake, so this is not a, uh, city council issue. It's the, the, uh, Board of Supervisors for the county. Uh, so, uh, I, I realize it's just terminology, but, uh, I, I just wanted to make sure that we're talking apples to apples. I brought up in passing the fact that when you look at the map, that this is pretty obviously a spot zone. I never said that I wanted anything done about it. I never said that, uh, you know, I was looking to, to stop anything because of, you know, it may be in a position where it's not zoned properly. That's not my intent and, uh, that wasn't my intent when I brought it up. I just brought up the fact that I looked at that map and it's pretty obvious that the only thing all the way around that piece of commercial property is otherwise residential or open land use. So it's, uh, uh, you know, it, it's, uh, it is what it is. It's very obviously, uh, been zoned that way. Probably politically, back in the day for the Rebecca's Lodge, because they wanted to build a, uh, nice commercial facility for their meetings.
Well, it could also be, Bob, that the Rebecca's Lodge was founded before there was really too much zoning in Lake County. And so when the zoning was put in place.
That building, it was built in the, I, I want to say the seven, sixties or seventies, but, uh, it was built after, you know, when, and, and I don't know if it was zoned that way prior, uh, there was a building there prior to that, so. But, uh, I, I'm willing to, uh, withdraw my argument about the traffic study. Uh, I see that, uh, staff and, and, uh, the county don't take the same position that I do. So I, you know, I, I'm fine with that. And, uh, you folks are welcome to, uh, discuss, uh, the ins and outs of, uh, what we're doing here. But, uh, uh, I don't know that I'm going to be in favor or not. Uh, I'm still trying to make up my mind about, uh, what we've talked about this morning and what we've talked about in the past.
If I, if I could, Bob, just real quick, I just, I think we should go ahead and officially close public comment. Um.
Sure.
I don't see anyone else trying to speak up. I mean, we have the applicants and we can still ask them questions specifically.
Correct.
Uh, they're the ones with their hands raised, too. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment if that's okay with the supervisor, with the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. If you wish to continue, Bob, um, I do have some other issues that I, I actually have questions for staff on also, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Nicole.
Yes, Nicole.
Um, just to make it, uh, just to make it clear, and I'm, I'm sure, um, your commission already is aware. But, um, the description provided by, um, Mr. Candell was, uh, more of a description of a ministerial process. This is not a ministerial process. This is a major permit analysis. Um, you, your job as a commission is to weigh the evidence that is put in front of you. If you have weighed the evidence and you have found that there is not substantial evidence in the record to support the findings that staff has recommended, then you vote no. If you have weighed the evidence and you find that there is substantial evidence in the record to support staff's recommendations, then you vote yes. If there is information missing, then you have the option of continuing to a later date and, and, uh, requesting that staff provide that missing information to you at that time. But this is a weighing and analysis of evidence that is put before you. And that does, that evidence does include not just the report, but, but the testimony that's been, well, not testimony, but the comments that have been provided to you today by, um, the public and the applicant.
Thank you, Nicole. And I do, I, I did kind of feel that, uh, the applicant did make some comments about the traffic that kind of more or less supported Bob's concerns. Um, and of course, it's not really fair that we put this on the applicant. Um, and it is, like Bob says, is kind of a poorly, poorly placed commercial property. Did you have something, something else you wanted to continue on that, Bob, before I interrupted you to close public comment?
No, I'm, I'm done for now.
Okay. Uh, does anybody else have anything else they wish to speak on this? I did notice in, was that Christina?
That was me just saying, um, no, I, I didn't have anything to, to chime in on.
Okay. I don't know, I, it kind of seems like we might have some kind of a delay here, so I don't. I'm trying to be patient with all of this. Um. And this would be directed to Ms. Kim on, in one of the agency comments, there are some comments about, uh, from CalFire. And I don't see that any of their concerns have been addressed in the proposal. Uh, as far as, uh, the storage tanks, the, what else do they have, a setback from the road for the gate and, and those kind of concerns?
So what usually agency, um, kind of give us the comments is sometimes they specify that some of the concern that it addressed, but I believe that those comments from CalFire are genetic. And this is not applicable to their comments because this is not cannabis commercial cultivation, but it's a dispensary. So the all products are prepackaged and then there's no cultivation at all on site. So those comments from CalFire are for commercial cannabis cultivation. And I've seen those comments, um, for, uh, commercial cultivation projects, not for.
Well, this is talking about the Lake County Chief Building Official and as well as acting as the Fire Marshal, which is probably, they're looking at the building itself and the business, not, not any kind of grow.
So those water tank requirements for, uh, cultivation, because in case that there's fire, a lot of the times the commercial cannabis cultivation requires a lot of water tank for irrigation. But this type of business do not require cultivation requirements.
Is there a fire hydrant nearby? Is that the county's determination why? Because there, this is for fire suppression and, and I know other businesses, um, I know like wineries, for instance, uh, are required to have a certain number of gallons of water onsite for, and obviously they're not, it, it's not for growing the vineyard. It's specifically for the fire suppression in the building. And I'm wondering if, you know, what, you know, because this is a major use permit and I believe they are required to upgrade to the current, uh, fire standards. And has that been addressed? I didn't see that that was addressed.
So if you look at the, uh, Section Four finding, um, major use permit finding, attachment number five, uh, section four, um, the application was routed to all the affected public and private service providers, including Public Works, Special Districts, Environmental Health, and PG&E. So they didn't have any, um, concern regarding about this project. And this is the first cannabis dispensary with the Lake County. Um, so I have to, some of the items that they addressed was for the commercial cannabis cultivation. So I have to kind of address that, correct them that this is not for cultivation at all, but purely for retail sales of cannabis.
Correct, and, and where I'm going on this is that it doesn't matter what kind of business this would be upgrading to, whether it's a, a small grocery store or a gas station or fast food restaurant or anything. They are still would need to upgrade to this, the current fire standards, I believe, for the building.
We do have a condition of approval. It's on.
Oh, it is in.
Section H, Transportation and Traffic. It is on page four of five. It says, "Prior to operation, the applicant shall meet and maintain all requirements and or regulations as defined in fourteen California Code Regulations, CCR Division 1.5, Chapter 7, Subchapter 2, Article 1 through 5 of the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection." So they'll have to meet those, those requirements geared towards that use prior to operation.
Okay, so, uh, but should that not be included in their, in their, uh, property? What is the? No, it's, uh, the layout.
The, the site plan.
Site plan. There should be provisions in the site plan for, for making that, for meeting those standards, correct, Mark?
Generally correct. And a lot of the times, too, they'll, will schedule an inspection prior to operation with our acting Fire Marshal to ensure those, or their designated, who have been trained properly to verify that those measures have been corrected or are in place.
Okay, and then the, so, go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mark, uh, I, I had a question. Uh, was Lake County Fire Protection District, uh, which this building is in, uh, were they, uh, contacted and they defer to CalFire? Or why is CalFire the agency we're talking on?
On the, on the agency comment, Bob, it says that the area is represented by both the county and the local fire district, uh, no, where was it? The Lake County Fire Protection District covers the area and the Lake County, uh, chief building is also, uh, building official is also the Fire Marshal who shall ensure all codes, laws, regulations, and et cetera for this project shall be applied with the support of the Lake County Fire Protection District's independent review and comment process. This includes components of, oh, they've got a list here.
But I didn't see a letter from Lake County Fire Protection District is what I'm saying.
A, a lot of times they'll defer to
Right, and this.
Other, other agencies for, for commenting.
And I think this does say your, what you just mentioned, Mark, the all fire safe regulations, laws in the state of California's Public Resource Code, Division Four and all sections in four two nine zero and four two nine one shall apply to this application, construction. All regulations of the California Code of Regulations, Title 14, Division 1.5, Chapter 7, Subchapter 2, Article 1 through five shall, shall apply to this application, construction activity.
So I, I assume then that they, uh, are, will be adhering to the, uh, fire suppression, uh, uh, equipment uh, that's required for a commercial building, is that correct?
I believe that's my understanding of this, yes.
So I, if, may I?
Yes.
So I spoke to, um, Building Division with the CDD. And then regarding fire sprinkler, in case that there's any kind of remodeling inside of the building, they, the applicant has to apply a building permit in order to do that. For a planning's perspective, we do not actually regulate the sprinkler system. So in case that the applicant, um, I, I, I'm sure that they're going to do some minor modification, but if they decide to install sprinkler, they have to go through Building Division for further, further permits.
Okay, just this letter is stating how, uh, this location is within proximity and or surrounded by very high wildland fire hazard severity zone, which is the most extremely, the most extreme and hazardous area category for wildland fire risk. Um, and so I, that is just.
But is the assumption that the applicant is not going to do the correct thing with regard to fire safety? I, I don't understand the, where we're going with the, the fire stuff.
I just wanted to make sure.
Obviously, in order to be permitted and, and open as a business, they have to be in compliance with all of those things.
They do have to be in compliance, and I just want to make sure that it's not getting overlooked, that's all, John. Looks like Scott.
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Scott DeLeon. If I could, uh, you had asked a question and, uh, I'm just trying to help, uh, provide information as your, uh, commission asks it. Uh, there is a fire hydrant, uh, it is at the intersection of Lake Street and Bryant.
Okay.
So it, uh, is directly across the street from the corner of this property.
So that should qualify as far as them not needing storage for, for that, I believe. Okay, that, that was a question I had, Scott, thank you. Okay. As far as the building, though, I, you know, I guess if they do any kind of remodel, then it triggers the, the need for fire sprinklers, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. John or Bob or Eagle or Christina?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any further questions, just, um, some closing comments after my colleagues have had a chance to weigh in.
Thank you, John.
Chair, I'll just add, uh, real quickly, um, my concern going into this, uh, discussion was, uh, purely with traffic. Um, and that this, this applicant, an application doesn't meet the threshold, uh, for that traffic study. Um, pretty much has taken my concern away. I'm comfortable with the applicant's, um, due diligence to work with the county, to find, um, some type of middle ground to, to support the safety of anybody using the road. But I think the, the bigger issue for myself is, is really the individual drivers. And again, like you had mentioned, that's nothing we can, um, hold the applicant accountable for. Um, so in regards to, uh, any other comments, I, I don't have any comments regarding any other part of the application. My concerns have been addressed. We don't have the threshold to, um, require a traffic study. So that's where my, my kind of comments are going to end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I don't have anything to say with my delayed internet connection.
Okay. Thank you, Christina.
Mr. Chair?
I'm ready to make a motion or someone can make a motion if you, if your John talks.
John, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I, I just went, and that's my dog in the background, I apologize. She thinks somebody's in the house. I, I do, I do support the application and I understand my colleague's concerns about safety. In response to Mr. Candell, we do have, we do have some leeway with respect to- That's very embarrassing. We do have some leeway with respect to testing about traffic because one of the standards we have to measure any application by is public safety and concern for safety. And I think in this context, traffic equals concerns about safety. Nevertheless, it's nobody's fault that COVID has made it impossible to do a realistic traffic study right now. That's not the county's fault, it's not the applicant's fault. And to delay something until there's a vaccine perhaps and people are back to their normal patterns is not realistic. I liked the, the school district's miscellaneous suggestion about crosswalks at certain strategic points. And there's a name for that flashing speed sign, which, speed limit sign, which I can't think of. But they're sprinkled throughout Hidden Valley Lake where I live and they do have a, an effect on, on how fast people go. Dust is not an issue for me in any way. And so I just want, wanted to state that I also agree with my colleague, Mr. Brown, about the applicant's due diligence on traffic and I'm prepared to support the application.
Okay.
I don't have anything further.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. And I'm finished as well. So if anybody would like to propose a motion-
Did you want to do a motion?
She's muted. There she goes.
With my delay, I don't, I don't feel like that's a, a good idea.
You had just, sure, I'll, I'll be happy to make a motion, see where it goes. Mr. Chair, regarding the categorical exemption, I move that the Planning Commission find the major use permit UP 19-50, applied for by Calazona Nahas LLC on property located at 8466 Lake Street, Lower Lake, further described as APN 012-054-25, is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, categorical exemption, Class 1, Section 15, 301, based on the findings set forth in the staff report dated September 1, 2020.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinrom?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John.
Regarding the major use permit, I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 19-50, applied for by Calazona Nahas, excuse me, LLC on property located at 466 Lake Street, Lower Lake, further described as APN 012-054-25, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 18 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and the findings listed in the staff report dated September 1, 2020.
Second.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinrom?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Okay. Like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay. Is everybody okay to move on to the next item or do we wish to take a little break?
I'm fine, Mr. Chair.
Ready if you are.
Okay. All right. Ready?
Also ready to proceed.
What's that?
I'm also ready to proceed.
Okay. Just wait for staff to get situated here. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit, UP 18-29, and categorical exemption CE 19-48. The applicant is Alex Beck proposing 1A Type 3 Outdoor, 1A Type 2 Small Outdoor, and 2A Type 1C Specialty Cottage Commercial Cannabis Cultivation Licenses, consisting of 5,000, 58,320 square feet of cannabis area located within 68,400 square feet of cultivation area. The location is 13306 Elk Mountain Road and 13052 White Rock Canyon Road, Upper Lake, further described as APNs 0-002-023-90 and 002-023-93.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I did prepare a PowerPoint presentation. I was hoping if we could maybe do a shared screen or how would we pull it up?
Jake?
Yeah. So we could, we could do a shared screen there. Do you have the PowerPoint on a thumb drive or do you know its location?
I know its location in the E-drive.
And that is the community development share?
Yes, it should be.
Okay. Standby one second here.
Yeah.
There should be a mouse there. Can you locate it from here?
Yeah. Oh, cool.
Perfect.
All right, there we go. Can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Uh, one second is not being shared yet, I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
Here we go.
And from, we should go from the beginning and you should be good.
Okay. Thanks, Jake. Okay. Hello, everyone. So today I'll be presenting the major use permit for a commercial cannabis cultivation application. The applicant, as mentioned before, is Alex Beck. So I'll go ahead and start right off. So basically what I'll be going over today is the permit request. I'll be explaining the project description as well, give a little bit of description of the site itself. We'll move into the project analysis and then finally I'll go ahead and go over with staff's recommendations and conditions as well. So to start things off, the applicant does seek approval of a major use permit. They're planning on cultivating 58,320 square feet of all outdoor cannabis, outdoor cannabis, located within, that's a typo error, it should be 68, it should be 68,400 square feet. Sorry, did not change that out at the time. So the cultivation area being 58,000 square feet with, with 320 as well is approximately 2.4% of the total area to be cultivated on the site. As you can see on the right-hand side, I do have a zoning map outline there. You'll notice that there's two parcels associated with this cultivation area. On the left-hand side, that's where the, the left parcel cultivation will be located at. The applicant is proposing to use the clustering, the clustering method, which is an allowable use within Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. So staff has determined that the project does qualify for this license, these licenses that their applicant is applying for in reference with Article 27, subsection AT. On this slide, I wanted to go ahead and just outline a little bit about what the applicant is applying for in terms of licenses. So he, he'll be applying for three license types, four licenses total. It's going to be a 1A Type 3 Outdoor Cultivation License, which allows up to one acre, an A Type 2 Outdoor Cultivation License, which allows up to 20,000 square feet, and then two A Type 1C licenses, which allow up to 2,500 each. Pardon me. So the site is approximately 4.2 miles northwest from the community growth boundary. As many people might be familiar, this is north of Upper Lake area, but it is not located within a community growth boundary. So a little bit about the application. Again, the proposed use is located at 13306 Elk Mountain Road. The parcel he will be using as clustering, which he will not cultivate on, is 13052 White Rock Canyon Road in Upper Lake, California. And the cultivation site is actually located in previously disturbed area, which I'll dive into a little bit in the environmental analysis portion. So the applicant proposes the cultivation to be in-ground over the existing vegetation and additionally proposes to provide cover crop with the cultivation operation as well. So in the staff report, I'll be referring to the, to the staff report on page two. There are some, some, some things that are, structures that are going to be proposed with the operation. So first and foremost, the applicant will propose a six-foot tall chain link fence, a security fence with opaque privacy screening. There will be one 12 by 40 ADA accessible office with worker storage and bathrooms that will be located on-site to accommodate the employees proposed. There will be two 5,000 gallon above water groundwater storage tanks, which are existing, one 360 square foot chemical and fertilizer storage area, two 4 by 6 non-hazardous waste structure, storage structures, and then one 8 by 20 and two 8 by 40 storage containers. So according to the applicant's proposal, the hours of operation is going to be Monday through Friday, 7:30 AM to 7:30 PM. And the, the operation could potentially have up to five max employees per peak shift. So I wanted to dive in a little bit further into the proposal. The cultivation area will be irrigated with a drip irrigation system. So the drip irrigation system is pretty, pretty common with cannabis cultivation operations. So in, in this project, there will be an irrigation pump that feeds the water from the storage tanks along with a PVC pipe to a series of secondary plastic irrigation lines. So in reference to the applicant's property management plan, the applicant does propose an estimated water use of 200,000 to 250,000 gallons per year, which will be drawn from an onsite permitted well. And the applicant has, has provided county staff with material from it being permitted. And it does draw 15 gallons per minute, which with some calculations, it translates to approximately 7,889,237 gallons per year, which is sufficient to support the proposed water usage. So just kind of playing a little bit with numbers, that would translate to approximately 3.1% of total, total usage from the proposed water use and the water available per year. Additionally, to add to that, a condition of approval has been added that requires the applicant to install a meter that continuously measures the water level. And also the applicant will be required to maintain a record of all data collected and will provide the report of the data to the county on an annual basis that comes as part of the annual inspection. So just to touch on this a little bit, the recommendation staff is providing is an approval of major use permit 18-25 with conditions outlined in the staff report and conditions of approval as well. So I'll go ahead and start talking about the site and kind of a little bit more information. I did provide some photos as well, so commissioners and the public can get a little bit of a visual in regards to that. So as explained before, the applicant accesses the property off of a private driveway off of Elk Mountain Road. Elk Mountain Road is a county maintained road. So in regards to the 4290 and 4291 road standards, there are some requirements that the applicant will need to meet, which are pretty simplistic and not necessarily in regards to the road as per our building division, the site was deemed compliant with 4290. He did need to add maybe a little bit of more clear signage to identify the site with an address posting. So the site is approximately 54.96 acres combined with both parcels together. It is rural residential zoning, which does support a commercial cannabis cultivation license. What you're looking there, the presentation is a photo of the site. Just to explain a little bit, that's looking towards the cultivation site from the driveway. There is some, some trees along the front property line, which I'll touch on a little bit later in this presentation as well. But just to reiterate, it is approximately 2.4% that's going to be cultivated in relation to the property size. So here is one of the site plans. You will find it in, in the attachments with the staff report. I just wanted to put it in here just so you can get a little bit of a visual, so you can see how the site, cultivation site will be organized. The applicant does meet the minimum setback requirements from both property lines and as many are familiar with the area, there is Middle Creek that traverses through the secondary parcel, which is not to be used for cultivation. But the applicant does provide the minimum setback requirements from both the creek and property lines. So a little bit about the project analysis. Staff did review that the project was concurrent with the Lake County General Plan, the Upper Lake Area, Upper Lake Nice Area Plan and the zoning ordinance. So through the review process, staff was able to determine that the project was consistent with the county ordinances and policies as well as the plans. And again, the commercial cannabis cultivation is a permitted use in the rural residential reserve, or rural residential district and with the issuance of a major minor use permit in reference to Article 27. In this slide here, I just went ahead and provided a little bit of an aerial map or vicinity map. The proposed use is consistent with the, with the proposed land use. Topography is 0 to 10%, so it's really flat out there as you could see in that first, first picture I showed in the presentation. So that's where the cultivation will occur. And again, it's not located within a community growth boundary. So staff did go out and do a site visit. So I'll provide those pictures here and we, I already explained the 4290. So this is that similar picture looking towards the cultivation site. As you can see, there are native grasses that are located on the site. To staff's understanding and the proposed documents, the applicant does not seek to do removal of vegetation. If anything, he'll be using it as a crop cover and additionally planting more crop cover for the proposed cannabis cultivation operation. And then this is the view from the end of the driveway and the cultivation site is on the right-hand side, but you're looking towards Middle Creek. So just kind of where those trees are at, a few feet more forward and you'd be, you'd be able to see the creek, which is identified as Middle Creek. Okay. So in regards to the California Environmental Quality Act, the recommendation that staff is proposing is that the major use permit submitted by Alex Beck be categorized as categorical exemption through, through, through two class exemptions, which is Class 3 and Class 4. So one being new construction or convergence of small structures and the other being minor alterations of land, as staff determined that the project had no impacts on the environment due to the implementation of the project. So I'll be referring to page nine of the staff report. I've outlined it a little bit and give a little bit more information regards to this and how staff came to this determination. So first things first, the proposed project is located on a site that's been previously disturbed with ag activities- disturbed with ag activities. The parcel was historically used for a black walnut orchard, and additionally, the parcel was also used for fodder grasses, which could include winter rye, barley, and other pastures for pasture grazing of livestock, which included horses and cattle. We did have a biological assessment submitted by the applicant first. There were some potential concerns in that biological assessment. With further research, staff did reach out to the applicant, and both the applicant and the county worked closely on identifying an appropriate pathway on, on this matter. The biological assessment first identified that there was a potential impact on sensitive species when the biologist first went out there, but the applicant went ahead and reached out to the same bio, same company and same biologist, and the biologist did provide a supplemental letter, which you'll find in attachment seven, I believe, of the staff report. It should be the last attachment. And in that letter, the biologist did identify that the parcel had been heavily impacted by past agricultural practices that date back to 1951, and determined that the potential species identified in the original biological assessment had low to no impact from the disturbance, and disturbance from planting of livestock and fodder and cattle grazing both contributed to, to that, to that matter. The proposed project will not significantly impact any plant or animal species, as no critical or sensitive species habitat were observed within the project area. Additionally, one of the other matters that came up, which I've identified in the staff report, was the potential of a smaller or minor creek passing through the cultivation site. It was identified in county resources, but with further research and further assistance from the biologist, she identified, the biologist identified that since there is previous impact in the same footprint that Alex Beck will be cultivating in, that the creek actually has already been impacted, and there would be no further impact from the culture, from the cannabis cultivation operation. Additionally, the state water board does not recognize this water course as, as a protected water course. Therefore, the proposed project will not create any further impact. In addition, the proposed project has a hundred-foot setback requirement from Middle Creek, which is the Baker Creek on the northeastern side. In regards to the cultural resources, there was a cultural resource evaluation that is dated April 14, 2019, that was conducted by an archaeologist for the proposed project. According to the study, there was no significant materials or features that were discovered during this field inspection, so the study concluded that there was no resources discovered during the valuation, and it has been determined that no cultural sites existed within the project area. Additionally, the project will not involve removal of healthy, mature scenic trees, and development will not occur within officially mapped severe geological hazard areas or earthquake fault zones. Another thing as well is that there is a scenic corridor. Elk Mountain Road is actually designated as a scenic corridor. However, the applicant has provided with their application a minimum of a 200-foot setback from the front property line adjacent to Elk Mountain Road, when the minimum requirement is 100 feet per Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance. And as I mentioned earlier, there were some trees onsite along the front property line that act as a barrier. It doesn't completely screen the cultivation area, but with the applicant's proposal, he does propose to install additional vegetative screening along the front property line, which would act as a visual barrier as well, and therefore no impacts to scenic corridor are Lastly, the project will not involve installation of new structures that exceed 2,500 square feet in floor area. As proposed with this project, the new construction consists of 1,688 square feet total with new construction. So both of these exemptions were applied for this project. Both exemptions apply to the project for cultivation, and the structures are in assistance to the cultivation operation or accessory to the operation, so that's where staff made the determination that the project would be categorically exempt. So there are major use permit findings that need to be met in order to meet the permit requirements and recommend approval. So on the left-hand side, we have Article 51 findings, and on the right-hand side, we have Article 27, which is the cannabis, commercial cannabis cultivation ordinance. So just to touch on a few, the project is shaped adequately, in its size adequately to support the license types. For an A type three, it's a 20-acre requirement. For an A type two, it's another 20-acre requirement, and then it's five-acre requirement for the type one C's licenses, which the applicant does provide or does have enough area to apply for those licenses. The project does have adequate public and private services. They do have a permitted well onsite. They do have a conforming or complaint of road to go to the site. Elk Mountain Road is county-maintained, and his driveway has met the 4290 road standards with the turnarounds and turnouts as well. On the right-hand side, the project does comply with all development standards, and the applicant qualifies to make the application, which the, the findings were outlined in Article 27. So what staff is recommending is to adopt the categorical exemption and approve the major use permit. There are conditions of approval that the applicant will need to meet, which are outlined in attachment four and the staff report as well. But other than that, that concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here today, so if you have any questions for staff or the applicant, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Um, I think, could we possibly have you maybe come stand at the microphone, so we can direct some questions to you before we open this up for public comment? And I'll go ahead and have you state your name for the record.
Alex Beck.
I'm sorry, I don't know if that was picked up. I, I threw my name.
Alex Beck.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
Um, first, I had a few questions for staff. What, what is our, we have some kind of regulation on storage containers, allowing storage containers on properties. Is that correct, Mark?
Correct.
And what, what is that?
So in Article, Article 68, they essentially have to be screened from public view, have like a wood or similar type siding to make them look more like a natural structure and equipped with some type of, of roof pitch.
Okay. And you're aware of that?
Yes.
Is the applicant?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I also had, so Department of Water Resources didn't have any comments for, for Middle Creek at all, because Middle Creek does have a monitoring station at the lake that gets monitored at least once a year for contaminants.
Yeah, so I, when I picked up this project, I rerouted it out to all the agencies for request for review. The agency comments you see in the attachments, that's the ones we have received, so.
Okay. And then what, what was the water level across that property in the flooding of 20, let's say, I think it was 2018, 2019, when Middle Creek flooded pretty bad? Do, do you guys know? Because I know at least further downstream, it was 300, 400 feet over its banks. I mean, the water level was six, seven feet deep in areas. Are you aware of any of that?
Yeah, well, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know how to answer that. I'm not too certain what the water level was. Maybe through other resources, we would be able to get more information on that.
If I might chime in, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board came and did a site inspection, and they did a delineation for the top of bank based on historical 100-year flood marks. And so that information is also available via FEMA map that you guys have on file, and it shows the flood zone overlay for that, and I believe that's included with.
And you're outside of that area?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't have enough time over the weekend to go over all the information.
No, of course.
And I apologize to my colleagues for that as well.
And just one, one more thing to mention, there's also was a previously installed rock rip rap throughout different areas, and also included on the Salt Flat Creek where they, where they marry there. So there has been land improvements made for flood, you know, containment in the past, so.
Okay, I'll go ahead and, does any, any of the commissioners have some questions or comments or concerns?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bob. I mean, yes, John, sorry.
No worries. We got a late letter from Kate this morning from Mr. Gary Lewis, who doesn't seem to oppose the, the application, but would appreciate fencing that is aesthetically pleasing as possible. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure Mr. Lewis is with us today, but is it the standard fencing that we should expect with the standard screening and is, is, or what kind of supplemental plantings Victor did, is, is the applicant referring to? Or Mr. Beck, if you're, you're standing right there, you can answer that.
Yeah, we're using a woven wire fence material, which is traditionally used for, you know, pastures or for horse fencing, basically. And then, yeah, we're using a opaque screening, which some of the neighbors have driving down the way. It's just traditionally what you see. And then, yeah, we, we're considering planting fire-tolerant, drought-resistant vegetation in compliance with different recommendations, and there's a, there's a county resource for, like local preferred vegetative crops. So, yeah, we've, we've had a list, but yeah, we, we very much understand and are concerned as well with maintaining and preserving the scenic integrity, and, you know, we can, we totally understand how there, there are a lot of operations that do, I believe personally are an eye store, and so we absolutely want to, want to be as, you know, not noticeable and as inconspicuous as possible, and just try to blend in with the surrounding, you know, vegetation with agricultural use. You're welcome.
Well, and this is a pretty, fairly heavily traveled recreation area, you know, for the Elk Mountain OHV recreation area, and then also Lake Pillsbury, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Does anybody else? John, are you, I mean, Bob, are you? Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up to, go ahead.
No, it's okay, my voice changed.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to answer for you, it's just so delayed.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Actually, if we could have, we probably have to disinfect this now, don't we?
I can.
Here comes Sam.
I just, we have to have the microphone when you answer, so we don't have any other microphones that we could use, do we, Sam? We don't have any other microphones?
Not now.
Jake, does, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to make any comments?
I just reshared the dialogue for people to raise their hands, and I currently do not have any hands raised.
Let's go ahead and maybe open it up, we're waiting for, for Sam to disinfect our podium up here.
All right, so I've sent out a request for all participants in the Zoom room to unmute. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute yourself and state your first and last
Now you just touched that, Sam, you have to disinfect it again. Okay, it doesn't look like we have anybody, huh? Jake?
Yeah, it does not appear so.
Okay. Okay, we do have someone here in chambers?
Hello there, this is Lance Williams, Lake County Cannabis Alliance at lakecannabis.com. I'm not familiar with this project, I've not met this gentleman, but I see there's an 18 on the U.P. I see really no, no comments about saying, do not, I don't want this project near me, and so that's really quite a comfort to see. And I obviously, I trust Victor and the Planning Department, CDD on, on their decisions, so this seems like it's a real, a really easy project to approve, so we just wanted to kind of give it our blessing and say thank you for your time, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you, Lance. Okay, and that's all, the only person we have here in chambers. So we'll go ahead and close public comment. We didn't have any new people show up, did we?
No, there's been no new traffic into the Zoom room.
All right, we'll close public comment, bring them back to the board. And if you guys have any questions, the applicant is still here, we're, we'll bring him back up to the podium if we need to. Okay. I guess I'm the only one. I'm the only one in here today. Nobody wants to make any noise.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I also can't make motions, so whenever someone else wants to speak.
Commissioner Mally, your final motion?
I appreciate the, aww.
Mr. Chair, I move the planning commission find that the categorical exemption CE 19-48 applied for by Alex Beck on property located at 13306 Elk Mountain Road and 13052 White Rock Canyon Road, Upper Lake, and further describe A as APNs 002023-90 and 002-023-93 will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore categorical exemption shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated September 14, 2020.
Second?
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Mally.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram.
Mr. Chair, major use permit, U.P. 1829, I move the planning commission find that the major use permit, U.P. 18-29, applied for by Alex Beck on property located at 13306 Elk Mountain Road and 13052 White Rock Canyon Road, Upper Lake, further described as APNs It's not on there, but does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, Sections I, comma, II, G, and III, I of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit to be granted, subject to the conditions with the findings listed in the staff report dated September 14, 2020.
Second?
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Mally.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay, and that concludes our second item on the agenda, and since there's nothing else, we will go ahead and, no, I'm just kidding. Do we have any untimed staff update? Office news?
Office news?
We do. Is there anything you guys have you want to?
Well, it is Commissioner Mally's last.
Well, I thought it was something important you were gonna, no.
We can do that, or we can, Mark has.
Yeah, do we want to do the office news first, or do we want to take care of our retiring colleague?
Take care of the office news first.
You're not getting away that easy, Bob. Okay, Mark.
So I don't, this is Scott Eleone, I don't know if Tokara or Mark.
So, I don't, this is Scott Eleone. I don't know if Tokara or Mark, who's going to perhaps tee up. We've got some presentation that we'd like to make as part of our untimed, our untimed item here.
Mark is here. Is that what you're going to do, Mark? Or no? Mark looks like he's like a deer in the headlights, so.
Perfect.
Go for it, Scott. Go for Tokara.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the screen, and I'm looking for our staff member. Is Catherine prepared to make her presentation?
Come up here.
Oh, we do.
It'd be the hemp.
Okay, we do have, she is here. I thought you were the press, because it says reserved for the press, you see. Oh, hold on.
We're in the same household upstairs.
Our chief disinfecting agent has to perform his duties.
Turn it off.
Don't forget the armrests on the chair.
Oh, I'm supposed to do you, too.
What's that?
I'm supposed to do you, too.
Too bad you guys aren't here to witness this.
You're missing all the fun.
We can see, we can see. We're dragging Commissioner Mally's last day out as far as we can.
I was my part of this, Buck.
Wait, before we adjourn, can we take a two-hour lunch break? Okay, go ahead.
Hi.
So, Catherine, just give me one second here. I'm going to introduce Catherine Schafers. Catherine is one of our newer planning assistants, and is just doing an absolutely wonderful job with us. She's going to make a presentation on, for your information about the industrial hemp. I'm looking for a nod there, Catherine, that that's what you're planning on doing. All right, beautiful. And so, I will turn it over to Catherine and take it away.
Hello. Good morning or afternoon. I'm not quite sure what time it is. Okay. My name is Catherine Schafers. I am a new assistant planner here with the CDD. And today, we're going to give you an overview of what's been happening with industrial hemp here with the CDD, as well as the general process for the CDFA, as well as the Department of Ag, but mostly focusing on the Community Development Department. So, for this presentation, we also have a PowerPoint. So, fingers crossed, it'll be all right. It can also be found in the E-drive. It's also been emailed, so just a moment here while we poke through it.
Do we know how Victor's was pulled up before?
Jake, are you there to do a shared screen?
Uh, yeah, here, one moment. Is this one in the same location as the previous PowerPoint?
Uh, no, it won't be. So, it'll be if you go to the E-drive.
Okay, so I took it to share here. Can you navigate from this point?
There should be a mouse right there.
Oh, Mark, would you mind? Thank you. So, it should be under Planning. And cannabis, and, uh, right down, right below that. Oh, sorry. Oh, it is hemp, that's right. All right, then we can go to my folder. Sorry.
Just opening up Jake's email, it's all right.
That's quirks with the remote assistance.
Okay. Randomly pops up?
And projects in the app.
So, perhaps while they're working on that, I'll fill some space here with some additional department updates. As you're probably aware, the board approved our department budget this year, and it results in a cannabis division we're really excited about. We're going to be starting some recruitment for that just as soon as we can get all the paperwork through the processes. And so, we're really excited about that. I should also note that the departments are officially merged. So, we can take interim off of my title, and I'm extremely happy to be the Director of Community Development, along with some of my other hats here, so.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Maybe.
Be careful what you wish for, right? Now, we're really excited, and we're making some steps forward and looking forward to that. And some of our newer staff are certainly helping transition towards that. So, she's, looks like she's ready to go, so I'll turn it over to Catherine.
All right, thank you very much. And like I said, this is going to be an overview of industrial hemp, specifically for the Community Development Department, and how we've been undertaking this new process. All right, so let's go ahead to the next slide. Oh, thank you. All right. Okay, so first, let's go ahead and start off with the definition of hemp. In some, hemp and cannabis are from the same plant. It's just the amount of THC or Delta-9 tetrahydrocannabinol concentrate. That's what makes the difference. So, if there's no more than 0.3% on a dry weight basis, that is what hemp is. Cannabis is anything that's over that percentage. So, when you look at a hemp plant and a cannabis plant, they look very similar. So, in order to truly tell between the two, there are means of testing that. And so, we'll be going into that a little bit later. The CDFA has put some proposals forward as far as legislation that's going to help tell the difference. So, that'll be at the end of the presentation. But for now, definition of hemp is 0.3% on a dry weight basis. Over that of THC, you'll get cannabis. Below that, you'll get hemp. All right. Okay, so as an overview, on February 12, an amendment was made to the zoning ordinance, allowing the Community Development Department to issue zoning permits for hemp. Since that time, six zoning permits have been issued for industrial hemp. We are part of a larger process that starts with the Department of Agriculture, though. So, the Department of Agriculture has an applicant fill out the initial industrial hemp permit for them. When that applicant has filled out their materials, those materials are then forwarded on to us. I know this is small, but this is a summation of how the process goes. So, it starts with the Department of Agriculture having the applicant fill out their permit for hemp. Those materials are then forwarded to us, the Community Development Department. That could either be via email, physical mail, or sometimes the applicant will drop by with those materials. So, in our zoning ordinance, we have a small section for industrial hemp. It is Section AB in Article 27. There are five major bullet points to look for when we do take a look at these hemp applications. The partial shall contain a minimum of one acre for indoor or greenhouse cultivation, and a minimum of five acres for outdoor cultivation. Number two, if grading is required, all grading shall comply with the standards set forth under Chapter 30 of the Lake County Code. As part of an ordinance that was passed, I think it was last year in 2019, for the Department of Agriculture, the reason for the hemp zoning ordinance from the Community Development Department is specifically to check for grading, as well as other issues that might come up with our zoning ordinance. Number three, hemp cultivation shall be set back a minimum of 200 feet from an offsite residence. If the hemp cultivation site is within that, then a waiver must be obtained from the neighboring property owners. Number four, hemp cultivators are prohibited within 1,000 feet of a community growth boundary. Number five, seed production of any type shall be only grown indoors or within an engineered greenhouse with filters. So, these are the five things that we take a lookout for industrial hemp, specifically when we issue a zoning permit. Okay. So, what we see from the Department of Agriculture, their permit has four major parts. The first is the permit application, and then we see the applicant supplemental page, and then the cultivation site supplemental form, and then any other necessary documents, for example, a grant deed, maybe IDs, or anything that goes with that specific application. Once we receive those, once again, either by email, mail, or somebody coming in to drop that off, we then schedule an intake appointment, and an email is sent to the applicant with the following. A copy of our zoning permit, a grading questionnaire to see if they are either exempted from grading, simple grading, standard, or complex. The applicant will then come back during their intake appointment with one of those forms filled out and our zoning permit. Okay. So, our industrial hemp zoning permit looks just like any of our other zoning permits. Something that we've recently added to our zoning permit application is an accurate description of a site map. This does come from Article 55.2 in our zoning ordinance. Some of the initial issues we were having with our industrial hemp applicants is that their site maps were too incomplete to see if they would fall under our zoning ordinance for hemp. So, we included this zoning permit site map as part of our application, so they would know how to fill out their application correctly. Part of the big issue here is that the CDFA has slightly different rules for site maps than we do for our zoning ordinance. So, when some of our applicants were submitting their site maps, they were going off of different information than what was found in our zoning permit. Okay, so during the intake appointment, the applicant pays two fees. The first is for the zoning permit, which is 24380. And as you can see, it is red with a little asterix, so that fee might change in the future. The second fee is for the grading exemption or for a grading permit in general. The exemption, I believe, is $98, and then the other grading permits, I think they're a little bit more, they're a little bit more expensive, and it depends on the amount of time it takes to process those. All right. So, the following four slides are just a little bit of a look inside of our internal process of when we get that zoning permit. The purpose of these slides and this presentation in general is to give you an idea of what it looks like when we process a zoning permit. So, even though these might be a little bit clunky to look at, I'll give you some highlights and then go from there. So, when the Department of Agriculture sends us a hemp application, they're looking specifically for us to check it through our CDD system in relation to planning, building, and code enforcement. What the Department of Agriculture had found when they started issuing hemp permits is that there were quite a few issues that they were running into, and they wanted to head those off by having them go through our process. So, in planning, as you can see on the screen, these are some of the steps that we check for a general permit application, including if the lot is legal, the setbacks, what zoning it is, and if it's near any offsite residences. So, once again, this is pretty technical on the screen, but it just gives you a good idea of some of the steps that we follow in planning. For building and code, the main reason that hemp goes through our department for these two entities, and as you can see it up there, I can't really see it. I'm looking around a screen. So, this step is to ensure there are no issues that building or code can find with the property or buildings. So, for example, if there are buildings that are unpermitted or need permits, if there are major barriers that prohibit the processing of the application, we do make the Department of Agriculture aware. If there's any code issues on the property, the Department of Agriculture, once again, needs to know those before they can process the entire application on their end. For complete applications or applications with only mild issues, a zoning permit may be issued. For those with mild issues, we do have conditions for the zoning permit that they need to meet. Once again, this is technical. This is the last of the technical slides. When you grant a zoning permit, there are a number of steps to follow. These are all based just on the zoning permit requirements. These are not specific to hemp. For the hemp permits, though, we do have a conditions of approval template that are based off the zoning ordinance, Section AB. Those five items, once again, that the zoning ordinance necessitates for hemp. Once again, this is technical information. Okay. So, after the applicant has been issued a zoning permit by us, it goes back to the Department of Agriculture. The Department of Agriculture can then continue to process their application, sending out the application to different agencies to check to make sure that it needs everything it needs. Once the Department of Agriculture has given them their permit, they still need to register with the CDFA for hemp. This slide right here is from the CDFA. These are proposed industrial hemp regulations that will be coming down the line. The one that I've highlighted here is about testing, sampling, harvesting, and destruction of hemp plants. So, this was originally an emergency regulation that the CDFA proposed. It is now being proposed as a permanent resolution, and that's the date of submittal that you see down there, 4/28/2020. This has not yet been proposed, but the emergency version of this is already in effect. What this says is that it gives an idea of how the CDFA, and by extension, the Department of Agriculture, will be able to regulate the testing of hemp to make sure that it is different from cannabis. That was the main issue with hemp in the beginning, when we were regulating it via our permits. So, this is proposed regulation coming down the line that will afford the Department of Agriculture and the CDFA more leeway in testing of hemp plants. So, if you'd like to read that, the information is there, but I will not spend the next 20 slides on it. All right. So, for industrial hemp, we have a few challenges that we've highlighted here, and I'm going to be asking my principal planner, Mark Roberts, for some input on this. So, Mark, would you like to?
Sure. It's still morning. So, some of the challenges we have are the existing access and the 4290 and 91 requirements is if someone's just cultivating, and we find out that they want to process or they want proposed processing, the access requirements can change significantly. They now have to become up to commercial standards. And I do have Mike here from our code enforcement, who can go into the more detailed aspects of what requirements they have to meet specifically. But in terms of challenges, say one comes in, and they're outdoor cultivation, we are doing their site visit, and they want to come back and start processing, or they have an existing building they want to process. One of the challenges is, is the existing access would have to be improved, which could cross multiple property lines, which could be like a private shared access easement with restrictions, or widening the road, which could trigger a grading permit, and then potentially environmental review and other scientific studies, such as an arcan biological report. The zoning permit is a part of a larger process with other agencies. There are some zoning permits that we're just able to issue right over the counter, such as like a home occupation to allow one to have an office, or a granny unit if someone wants to construct a granny unit. The challenging part of processing the hemp permits is there's various aspects we have to look into prior to issuing it. Sometimes it can be fairly quick, and sometimes it's several hours of research and coordinating with various departments and other agencies, and it's time consuming. The site plans, like Catherine mentioned, it's the different aspects and requirements of the site plans. You know, the CDFA requires certain things. You know, the CDFAs requires certain things, and then we, as a county agency and other agencies that we work with, require specific things to be on that site plan. And it's just making sure we're coordinating with the applicant, but it also causes a delay in processing their use permit, or its owning permit, sorry. And then the conditions of approval. We have those five conditions of approval, but say they're processing or upon inspection, there's certain violations where we can still issue, we'll have to add additional conditions of approval that may restrict or not allow them to operate until those requirements are met. And those are some of the challenges that we're coming across and as hemp, industrial hemp cultivation is becoming new to our county.
All right. So in the presentation here, after we've presented, you know, what we've done with hemp so far, we're asking to see if you have any questions for us, or any input on the process.
And to add to that, for the emerging regulations for processing, testing, and that are up and coming, some guidance or insight of how you would like to regulate that, or direction for our department to create zoning regulations and ordinance and bring that back before the commission for consideration, or thoughts and suggestions to begin that process?
Mark, this is John Hess, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Do you have any information about the total amount of acreage planted by hemp versus cannabis? I'm just wondering how the two compare in the county.
If I may, I can speak to that. This is Catherine Schaefer again. So our hemp applications, we've only received, or sorry, we've only granted six. I'm currently working on four, and there might be about five or six coming down the line in the near future. If you compare that to cannabis, where we have over 200 applications currently in our queue, and we've granted over 100, I think, over 180 since 2018. So the acreage with cannabis for each of those projects varies, but for hemp, it is nowhere near the amount that we're seeing with cannabis.
Well, and we are down this year quite a bit from what we had as far as hemp last year. I do know just from driving around the county. So I don't know if they have a good number for you, John?
I don't have a number off the top of my head.
Oh, no, no, that's very helpful. I just was, you know, curious about, you know, how the two compare. So there's no additional onslaught in terms of the intake, and they're in the courthouse, you're not flooded with hemp applications the way you are with cannabis applications, it sounds like?
Not in compared to cannabis, no.
Right. Thank you.
So, Mark, you were saying you wanted some kind of guidance on this? I mean, I kind of feel like this is kind of out of left field, you know, just kind of by surprise that...
It might be, you know, multiple more discussions to come back and present more in-depth details of the up and coming regulations, and maybe that's where, you know, if we can put that together and come back with, this is coming down from the CDFAs, it's supposed to be approved at such and such time, and so we have more of a concrete understanding of the new regulations that are being set by the state standards and CDFAs, so we can come up with a solution or potential ordinances or regulations of how to regulate that when we start receiving applications.
I think that makes sense. You know, for a while, the Planning Commission and the CDD had nothing to do with hemp at all, since it's an agricultural project. And I'm wondering, looking forward, how things might change again if the state or somebody does determine that cannabis is an agricultural project or product. But in terms of this process and procedure, I don't see anything to criticize. It seems like you have to coordinate closely with the state and with other county departments, and that it seems like a pretty straightforward procedure.
If I may give some...
Please.
Okay. So the reason that hemp was brought here today is because it's not necessarily a typical zoning permit that we intake, it's part of a larger process where we work with various agencies. So because of that, we need to know and understand the regulations of those other agencies and how it plays into our own permit. With the legislation that's coming up, because there is an influx of new proposals for hemp, that also might mean that we need to reflect that eventually in our zoning permit, or zoning ordinance, sorry.
Right. And I think it's, I mean, it's going to be just like it was with cannabis, where it's kind of a fluid ordinance until everything gets finalized. And I don't know how we address that, whether we word something specifically in the ordinance to that aspect that as things change, we have to change with them, or do we put something off until a certain date, or, you know, certainly we don't want to have something set...
The ordinance is severable.
What's that?
And so even if there is something that has to be tinkered with, it doesn't affect the entire ordinance.
Right. And how, so these are, these permits would be something like somebody wanting to plant a vineyard, correct? Or how different? I mean, obviously, it's a different product and regulated slightly differently, but, I mean, it's agriculture.
If somebody wanted to come in, excuse me, imply for a vineyard, a walnut orchard, and it's a use by right, it's, the only thing that it may trigger is a grading permit, depending on the level of soil to be disturbed, which could trigger the environmental analysis, depending if it's a, depending on the level of grading permit necessary for the proposed product.
And that's the same that you're looking at with this ordinance as well, too, correct? You did mention grading.
Correct. I mean, some, most of the zoning permits, from my understanding, have been in previously disturbed areas or areas used for agricultural products in the past. We haven't had a parcel from, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, that has required a standard or complex grading permit.
Nothing more than exemptions. Most of the, actually, all of the hemp zoning permits that we've issued, at most, have done disking as a traditional agricultural practice, and that's it.
Right. And what, with the Ag Department, you guys are working with the Ag Commissioner and the Ag Department, and is that...
We, yes, we've been working with the Ag Department, and since this is a new process, we've been trying to, you know, formalize it a little bit more and get some flow charts going and understanding. But, you know, we are all in part of this process with the CDFAs, with our zoning permit for hemp, so...
Right, right, right. Okay. So what did you want from us?
Just to be aware that there is legislation coming down the line that might necessitate changes in our zoning ordinance.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I mean, it is what it is, we don't have control over that.
Correct. When, do you know when those are anticipated to?
There is no anticipation of when it is, but there is the emergency proposal, or sorry, it's the emergency action that's already been taken as far as testing. So the Department of Agriculture has been in Lake County able to test hemp versus cannabis. So this new legislation that I just went over is going to give them more structure to that process. And in part of that structure, it might also impact how we do our zoning permits.
Right.
Yeah.
And do we have any interests, anybody showing any interest in any kind of a lab in Lake County for doing this kind of testing?
I haven't heard about one yet, and the last I've heard, we do have to take them out of county for that.
Right.
More processing and wanting to, like, dry and cure similar to what they do with cannabis, but it'd be for hemp on their project sites.
Okay. Do you guys have any, any questions or comments?
No, but I appreciate the information, and it is something to keep an eye on.
Okay. So, Mark, do we need anything?
So what if we'll keep an eye on the regulations, and then maybe when we have more of a concrete idea of what might be coming from the CDFAs and the new regs for, you know, processing and lavatories and manufacturing of hemp products, to come back before you can present those new state legislations?
Okay. I think as far as, as far as processing facilities or whatnot, I mean, it's an agriculture, you know, just like any other agriculture commodity or crop, that, you know, however the zoning addresses those, I assume that you're applying the same regulations to those.
We would, currently, we'd only have the industrial hemp, those few standards that we apply for conditions of approval for in Article 27. But if someone's doing processing or an existing building, they'll still have to meet all, like, the federal, state, and local agency requirements in regards to, like, road access and building permits and all those requirements that are set forth.
Okay. Okay, appreciate it. Anything else that you guys have? John, Bob? Bob, your last time to ask staff any questions?
Thank you, Catherine.
I appreciate keeping me aloof.
Now we have to go through this next meeting with our new commissioner. Right? Okay.
Commissioner, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe there's one more presentation.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Okay. Scott, is that true?
Well, we do have another presentation for you, if you want to take the time to do it. Catherine's also prepared a brief presentation on our efforts to date on cannabis inspections, the annual inspections that are required by Chapter 27.
Okay.
If you'd like to hear that, we're prepared to do that, and recognizing that today is kind of a special day, and we kind of jokingly said we're prolonging this as long as we can, and I don't want to, I don't want to overstep our bounds here. So we'd be happy to make a presentation on what we've done so far on the inspections.
What do you feel, it's like a 20-minute presentation?
It'll be brief, yes.
Wow. I had coffee this morning.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John?
I'm certainly happy to hear an additional presentation, and with all respect to our retiring colleague, I just wonder if it might make more sense to hold that until the next meeting, so that the information doesn't have to be repeated for an incoming commissioner?
Well, that's certainly a good point.
Just put it out there, that's all.
Well, it is up to us, and I realize that nobody else seems to want to talk too much today besides me, but it's not solely up to me.
No, I was thinking of saving staff time for not having to do a duplicative presentation.
Well, there is that, too. Does anybody else wish to speak on the issue besides me and John?
I would be in agreement with John.
I'm awake.
False.
I agree with John as well. I appreciate, you know, stop doing all of that, but also for Bob, this being his last long meeting, or last meeting in general, we can postpone it until next time.
Okay. I think let's go ahead and do that, let's wait till our next meeting for that presentation, please.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
And welcome.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, what?
Me?
Well, I'll just jump in then, and I imagine each of the commissioners may like to chime in here. Commissioner Malley, on behalf of the department, we'd just like to thank you for all your years of service. I think Kate, if Kate has a little something that we have prepared...
I don't know where the camera is, over there, I think.
It's camera.
We have a plaque to present to you. Obviously, you're not there in the meeting, and it's really unfortunate, frankly, that these times prevent the opportunity for all of us to be in the same room and celebrate all of your accomplishments and all of your service to the County of Lake. And I know you were recognized Tuesday at the Board of Supervisors, and we just wanted to take this opportunity to also thank you. The plaque reads, "Lake County Planning Commissioner, Bob Malley, District 2, 2010 to 2020, serving with energy and devotion to preserve the future of Lake County." And on behalf of all the employees of CDD, past and present, we'd just like to thank you for your diligent service and everything that you've done for Lake County, and you'll be missed. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, we're trying to show the plaque here for you, Bob, so you can get a look at it before you get it in person. We're working on it here.
Don't anybody hurt themselves.
I certainly appreciate your, there you go.
That looks nice.
Very nice, thank you.
You're well done.
I have appreciated picking your brain for some knowledge through our last few years as colleagues on the Planning Commission, Bob, and I will certainly be missing your knowledge.
And Bruno will be bringing you your plaque today or tomorrow, or at some point, I have to email him again to remind him.
Bob, you're a wonderful colleague and friend.
Thanks, John.
I'd like to say thank you as well.
Hold on, Eagle.
Yeah, I know how you feel.
Go ahead, Eagle.
Yes, yes, Bob, I want to congratulate you on your time, all your recognition. I've come before you as the vice chairman and tribal chairman of my tribe, also as a tribal historic preservation officer for the Big Valley Band of Homo-Indians, now as a colleague, and I appreciate your understanding, your overall knowledge of Lake County, taking into considerations everybody's input. You're definitely going to be missed, and I want to thank you for your time, and I hope you enjoy yourself and maybe tune into some of the meetings as they continue on. Thank you.
Thanks, Eagle, and we've always been colleagues, I appreciate that, thank you.
Enjoy your time on the road.
And I think, Christina, did you have something you wanted to say?
Give her a second.
All I said was, Bob, you know how I feel about you. Because my delay is critical. I'm so sorry. I'm giving you a hug right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again, Bob.
Well, thanks, I appreciate it, guys. We're going to be taken off for a couple, three weeks, first part of next month, and then looking forward to a cross-country coming up in the near future, so we'll think of you, I'm not going to be tuning in, I'm sure, but you guys keep fighting the good fight, you know, make your decisions as best you can for the best of Lake County, and you'll always be on the right side, so. And I don't know what happened with the record-keeping, but I believe, and Supervisor Smith agreed with me, I was appointed in 2007, but so I think I've got 13 years in, but I'll accept the plaque with the 10 on it, that works fine, so...
Commissioner Malley, I actually went back through, because Bruno had emailed me and asked me to clarify, and I went back through our minutes books, and it says that your first, in the official minutes in the book, it says that you were the newest member on February 25, 2010, and that it was your first meeting.
Okay, well, it's not the way, it's not the way that Jeff and I remembered it, but that's fine. I know I left the city council in 2006 in Clear Lake, and I thought he appointed me that very next year, but either way, it doesn't matter. It's been an honor. I started in 1967 as a cadet with the sheriff's office, went through as a reserve officer, went through one year in the jail while I finished my education to get my AA, and went on the road as a patrol deputy in 1972, and... and, of course, got hurt in 84 and ended up having to retire in 85, but I've always given my best to my community and I love the community and I'm looking forward to things coming back around and changing back to where everybody gets along with each other. That's, you know, center of the road decisions make for a much easier life for everybody. So the extreme radicalism on either side is, it just drives me nuts. But you guys all take care, do your best job, which I know you all will and I want to thank you again for recognizing me today and that'll be that, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you Bob. Okay, if we have no further business, I suppose I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go for it.
Or not, we can sit here.
How about that final motion, Bob?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, thank you Bob. Alright, so move a second, if there aren't any opposition, we are adjourned. Alright?
Bye everybody.
Bye.
Bye Bob.
Have a good day.
Bye Bob.
Bye Bob.
Enjoy yourself Bob.